The Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, January 14, 2022. The time now is 1:34. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating this Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice for this public hearing, we're submitting the email to all centers and all media broadcasting hours on Monday, January 3, and then change one on January 4, and then on January 11. We have three bills this afternoon, but we will begin with Bill Number 218-36 LS, introduced by Senator James C. Mullen, an act to appropriate the sum of no more than $15 million from the General Fund to the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency for the construction of a custom satellite inspection, holding and secure sterile facility area and the procurement of a stationary X-ray scanning portal, and to cite this act as the Protecting Our Borders Act of 2021. The rules of conduct for this Zoom meeting. This Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individual testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for recordkeeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any center or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing by my staff. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause removal from the meeting livestream. Colleagues and for folks that are testifying, if you're having a drink or eating a snack, that's allowable. Just hopefully you're not having a party while we're having our hearing. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this afternoon hearing. We have the author of the bill, Senator Jim Mullen. There you are, and we have the minority leader, Senator Chris Duñez, and we have Senator Tony Hadda. We also have to testify on behalf of the Guam Customs is Director Ike Pareto. I'd like to ask Senator Mullen to please provide us with your opening statement on your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, colleagues. Thank you also, Director, for your attendance today. Just a brief introduction of the bill as mentioned by the Mr. Chairman, sir. It's no more than $15 million from the General Fund for the purpose of the custom satellite inspection, holding and secure sterile facility area, and the procurement of a stationary X-ray scanning portal. And this will be the Act of Protecting Our Borders Act of 2021. So we know we've had some challenges getting this far, but there's some great history of why this bill or the appropriation of money is necessary to accomplish this measure to get the facility, secured holding facility, and the X-ray scanning portal there to protect our borders. This started way back before the original law back in 2018 for Public Law 34112, which established some property to be used by, from the Port Authority of Guam, transferred on over to the Customs and Quarantine, and it gave a deadline of five years to get the usage going. We had some difficulties then with H2B workers or even funding, and even with the pandemic that has happened. So since then, we were able to pass Public Law 3612, which extended this property usage for Guam's customs for another five years and for this parcel of land to be given to the Customs Authority from the Port Authority of Guam. And in the signing of the law for 36, Public Law 3612, the governor did stress in the enactment statement the importance of the construction of this facility to address the longstanding concern of our community to ensure that incoming cargo is properly inspected at a satellite facility for invasive species, prohibited products, and illegal drug trafficking. So the administration is looking forward, I think, to this facility being completed. Likewise, by the Guam Customs Authority as well, and the director in previous statement. And this will be a good thing to have. One thing that was stressed also when Public Law 3612 was passed is the funding source for this. And ultimately, we know we do have a funding source available, and we can see this funding coming from our latest CRER's report and also the EITC credit as well. So we understand that we have dedicated some of this funding to tax refunds and also the LEAP program. But we can also look at other additional revenues that we see forthcoming or they're identified in the CRER to at least get this project off the ground, which Customs has been really fighting for for quite some time. So that's where we're here today to identify no more than $15 million coming from the General Fund in support of these sterile facilities for the Customs at the Port Authority property to get things started and moving. So I appreciate the opportunity to do the opening statement. I'm going to look forward to the discussion on this bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Mullen. I'd like to also recognize my colleague that have joined us, Senator Telo Titegwe. I see other senators that are still trying to get in. I don't see their face, so I don't see their picture. So we'll move on. There's Madam Speaker Theresa Ly. We'll move on now to Director Ike Pareto from Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency. Sir, your testimony, sir.
Good afternoon, Senator, and members of this hearing committee. My name is Ike Pareto, and I'm the director of the Customs and Quarantine Agency. Before I begin, I would like to thank each of you for the opportunity to testify in supporting the intent of Bill 218-36, but also urge members of the legislature to include its provision in the upcoming fiscal year budget bill. The Customs and Quarantine Agency is Guam's first line of defense. CQA's mission is to protect our island, its people, and resources while facilitating legitimate trade, commerce, and travel. CQA enforces local and federal laws, securing our borders and protecting all ports of entry, ensuring the physical, social, and economic security of Guam and the region. Guam Customs is a government instrumentality in which inspections are conducted to protect our people, our resources, and our island. Customs collaborate with merit of local and federal agencies in which the Customs Satellite Inspection Facility could be utilized to collaborate or facilitate enforcement on behalf of the federal and local government. Years ago, at the Port Authority of Guam, Warehouse Number Two was designated sterile area in which freight held by Customs was placed, inspected, and cleared by Customs. Currently, there is no area in which loose cargo containers can be properly secured or isolated for a proper inspection. Bisecurity threats such as invasive species could be better treated at the centralized Customs Inspection Warehouse, where Customs can identify, isolate, and mitigate the trade. Warehouse Number Two has been demolished, and there is definite need for a custom-centric sterile and control area in which proper security, sterility, and is centralized for conducting efficient inspections and follow-up Customs Enforcement actions can be taken. Customs needs to have a secured and strictly controlled sterile area in which to operate. The area needs to be large enough to contain a standalone warehouse, Customs office, inspection areas, areas for isolation and mitigation, safety and security of containers, cargo, commodities, merchandise, vehicles, or other items that are held awaiting further disposition or action by Customs. Currently, CQA is planning on building a state-of-the-art Customs Satellite Inspection Facility at the Port Authority of Guam at Upper Harbor. The CFIS will aid Customs in fighting against terrorism, invasive species, prohibited imports, illegal contraband, and bisecurity threats to Guam, the United States, and the Pacific region. The CSIF will enhance CQA's ability to enforce laws and regulations that safeguard against threats to agriculture, economic, social, and environmental resources of Guam and the United States. Henceforth, having a Customs Facility adjacent to the port will ensure that cargo, freight, and containers are properly secured, inspection can be properly carried out, and proper washdown and treatment can be applied. This facility will be used to house federal and local entities to assist with the facilitation of trade and protection of our island and its resources. Moreover, the facility will contribute to the necessary function for the establishment of a comprehensive biocurity program at the Guam Ports of Entry. This facility and its operational division will provide the level of protection necessary to maintain and enhance the valuable natural resources of Guam and the region. CQA has small contingent of Customs assigned to provide Customs Inspection Services for all arriving vessels, cargoes, and passengers. The CSIF project is designed to provide all the requirements necessary to establish the Guam Customs and Quarantine Biocurity Division authorized under Public Law 3143, Section 6. The requirements include activities associated with identification and acquisition of property, permitting, construction of facility suitable to fulfill the functions of the CQA Biocurity Division Inspection Facility. The facility will host a scientific lab, lab equipment, offices for the scientific professions, the office of training areas for the Biocurity Division, personal and its agriculture quarantine inspection specialists, staging area, and office space for CQA drug detector unit, agriculture canine, CQA maritime personnel, and staff. The facility will provide access for biocurity public services, and CQA's counterpart, the CQA facilitates regulatory enforcement on behalf of. The facility will also be an asset for Governor Guam as well as the federal government. It will assist the territory in strengthening collaboration between local and federal agencies. CQA currently maintains positive relationships with local entities such as the Guam Department of Agriculture, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Revenue and Tax, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, federal entities such as USDA, AFSPQ, the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, also known as NOAA, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, the United States Coast Guard, the Federal Emergency Management, and the United States Department of Homeland Security. The proposed CSIF creates physical location for seamless handover of border control to inland control. The partnership and the facility yield another component in the ability for the agencies to combine competencies as CQA's CSIF. In collaboration with the Port Authority Management and their consultant, WSP, they have initiated a Guam Customs Inspection Facility feasibility study to update the 2013 PAG master plan in line with CQA requirements and functionality needs. PAG consultant provided a construction design based on CQA need and sterile security requirements. In addition, the Department of Public Works Engineering Division provided CQA with a two-story draft building designed incorporating the building dimension, the inspection area, the container bay, holding and securing facility, and office space with a proposed cost estimate of around $12 million. In order to properly execute this part of CQA's mission and maximize our limited resources, a new inspection facility is critically needed. In closing, I would again thank the committee for the opportunity to testify before you today, and kindly urge members of the legislature to include the provisions of Bill 218 in the upcoming fiscal year's budget after considering Bill 218's fiscal note in order to ensure sufficient funding for urgent priorities such as local funding match of $25 million for local employers assistance program to help businesses maintain employment and local funding, and also include the $10 million for work links, which both appropriate from the General Fund. Thank you for your time, and I will be available for any question.
Thank you, Director. A few questions. I'd also recognize colleagues that have joined us, Senator Sabina Perez and Senator Joanne Brown. Mr. Pareto, what grant applications have your agencies submitted? Since you mentioned a lot of federal agencies that will be participating in this endeavor.
What we did was we submitted our request to the clearinghouse down at the front office in trying to identify a funding source to build this particular infrastructure. And we have also looked at USDA technical grants, EDA, and to include meeting with GIDA to see if they can provide us some sort of assistance in identifying any type of funding source for the construction of the facility. They have mentioned several items that we can work with, such as the leaseback financing, to include bond financing, but this has been all forwarded to the front office for discussion at this point in time.
Right. So do you have a program coordinator in your department?
Yes, we have a PC3.
Okay, so a PC3 should be very familiar on how to search for grants that are out. I only requested you make use of that employee. That's normally their jobs, to look for grants and then be able to work it through. At the same token, have you reached out to GURA and finding out if GURA can assist you through their means of providing, such as when they build fire stations, police stations, and so forth?
Yes, we did. We were advised that those grants are for community grants, such as any type of organization that assists community, like the Police Department and the Fire Department.
Okay. So I would hope that, please provide the committee with all the findings in writing. Okay, I appreciate it. I will now begin asking colleagues if they have any questions. Senator Tony Hadda, sir, do you have any questions for the Director?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, Senator Duñez, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I think that the director has indicated that, you know, he'd like us to work on this going forward in the budget and considering some of the things that have been brought up. I want to contribute to the offer for ensuring that this is, you know, top of line on the radar with regard to what our needs are. And so I think a bill like this basically can facilitate us coming together to find that solution going forward. I think it is appropriate, you know, as we are in the budget season as well. We'll work with the author to continue to see what the options are. But I think it's necessary for the legislature to speak on its priorities. And certainly, I think, Mr. Chairman and the rest of us can agree, whether we scrounge around for the funding like you've recommended, as like in other areas. I know one thing we'll be doing is increasing or actually doing right by the Invasive Species Act in terms of collections there. While I don't want to detract from the main attention there, it's hard to believe that this facility will not have a massive impact on that. So that may also be another derivative, certainly, maybe a contribution from that as well. But I'll leave that for the work on the markup on the bill. But I wanted to recognize that it's truly something that we should be doing, identifying this key priority, Mr. Chairman. So for now, I don't have any questions. I just want to work with the committee and with the author to develop the bill. So just.
All right. Thank you, Senator Chris. Mr. Ike, one other question I stood by. Port Authority, where your building was, and it was demolished. Has the Port Authority ever mentioned that they're going to consider rebuilding what they demolished? Or was that caused by Guam Customs alone?
No, that's the PAG's decision on that because of their modernization of their facility.
And you guys weren't included as far as their modernization?
I'm not sure about that, Senator.
Okay, we'll do a follow-up on that one. I'd be very concerned about that. All right. Thank you. Senator Telo, you have any questions, ma'am? Your first one in.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. And thank you for bringing up the part about asking Customs if they've also, you know, gone through avenues of federal grants, funding, and going to the clearinghouse. You know, that was part of my questions to ensure that, and appreciate that question. And appreciate, Mr. Director Pareto, your answers to that, that you are doing your due diligence to find funding. Because I don't know if you had an opportunity to read the fiscal note regarding this, and I'd like to read it into the record. Per September 2021 Consolidated Revenue and Expenditure Report, CRER report, the General Fund collected approximately $62 million above the adopted level contained in Public Law 3599, which is the FY21 budget. However, it should note, the special fund revenue, well, special revenue funds as a whole collected approximately $20.7 million below the adopted level contained in Public Law 3599. Should departments funded by special funds have spent the levels appropriate to them in FY21, then the General Fund would be required to cover the revenue/cash shortfalls from those funds. Further, Public Law 36-54, which is the FY22 budget that we recently passed, appropriates $20 million from the FY21 General Fund revenues for the payment of tax refunds. And Bill 214-36 also appropriates $25 million to the Department Administration for the same funding source for the LEAP program. Lastly, the cumulative debt for the General Fund amounted to approximately $1.5 million per the FY2020 audit financial statement. Should both Bills 214 and 218 be enacted into the law, the result will be approximate balance of negative $20.2 million in unobligated General Fund revenue at the end of FY21. So based on this fiscal note that I read into the record, it shows that there is no funding that can fund this right now based on going into any excess revenue for FY21. And that's why I greatly appreciate Director Pareto, your work in trying to find some kind of funding to continue your efforts toward this facility, the satellite inspection holding station, and it's very important. We all know that, you know, a lot of our crimes are committed because it's tanned in hand with either drugs or some kind of contraband that's illegal to Guam that causes, you know, most of our crimes on this island. And I thank you for doing your due diligence and looking for ways to continue on this effort. I do support the intent of what this bill does, but the reality is, is there's no funding for it at this current time. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Telo. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for Mr. Pareto? Or comments on the bill?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate your questions as well on this bill. And Mr. Pareto and to the Customs and Quarantine Agency, I appreciate your testimony and your work towards creation of this facility. I know that earlier this year or this term, we considered a bill to extend the deadline for, you know, the property to be used. And that that hearing you assured us that you were pursuing these other funding sources, which the chairperson followed up with. Yeah, are you still pursuing those funding sources, particularly grants from different places? And I'm very glad that you are continuing to pursue other funding sources, and I'm glad that you reported in your testimony about the feasibility study that it was conducted by the ports consultant. And so it's clear that you now have a conceptual design from the feasibility study from the ports consultant, and that in addition, you have from the Department of Public Works a two-story draft building design with a proposed cost estimate of about $12 million. So that explains where we got this amount of $15 million, hopefully, and so I appreciate that. But the bill also talks about architectural, that we're also going to pay architectural and engineering design. So I guess if you could just clarify that before I talk about funding questions. Do you still need architectural and engineering design after this other work that's been done, the design work?
Yes, ma'am. We're still looking for funding to make sure that we can identify for the A and E. So we still have not really identified the funding to move forward with the A and E.
Okay. So $12 million is estimated cost of the building. What do you estimate the A and E to be?
About 10%.
Okay. And then, okay, so now, so the colleague before me discussed the fiscal note from BBMR, and you did too in your testimony. Thank you, Chief Pareto, for recognizing this and, you know, explaining that. So according to the BBMR's fiscal note, the funding source cited is not necessarily adequate or appropriate for this, and that we have to continue during our upcoming budget to look for funding for this. And I don't think anyone disputes. I think we're all in agreement. This is urgent. We want you, Customs, to be fully prepared and equipped to do everything you can to stop drugs from coming into Guam. We want this to be the number one priority on Guam. I agree with that. And so, you know, I just want it, I just also want us to be accountable for when we come in and say, we're going to take care of this in five years. We're going to find funding and that, you know, we are able to do that too. So I want you to pursue your efforts diligently. I want, you know, I want to recognize that BBMR has said from FY21 revenues, this might not be possible. You know, it's a whole other matter to discuss what's possible from FY22 excess revenues. If that, if we really do find that to be the case, and Mr. Chair would have to, you know, really walk us through that, maybe in a couple of months after we get another CRER or something, but so we can get a really good picture of this revenue. The OFB statement says, please note, you know, the excess revenue from FY21 cannot be certified or adjusted until the FY21 Government of Guam Financial Audit, which is anticipated to be completed and released in May or June 2022. That's right around our budget time as well, so we can hopefully reconcile these things. But what I wanted to know is, pending this, so this is still our priority. We want to fund this. We want to build this. But pending this, is there anything that, you know, you did a demonstration for us not too long ago down at the port as to, you know, the dogs and how they are being used down there, the portable X-ray machine. And I know that when we built this facility, you know, we were going to enhance our X-ray capabilities and our, you know, sterile environment. But for the dog capabilities, are we increasing those capabilities? And are we able to do that now without any delay pending, you know, further work on this facility?
Yes, ma'am. We are actively using our drug detector docks down at the port on a weekly basis.
Okay, and I think we gave.
So every day.
Great.
We look at the schedule and their schedule for their work site down at the port.
Okay, great. And then I think we gave a little bit of extra funding in the budget, if I'm not mistaken, for FY22 to ensure that you could hopefully get some additional teams of dogs and trainers so that we can expand that capability. Has that happened?
Yes, ma'am. We're looking at procuring four additional drug detector dogs.
Okay. And then at the. Okay, and then, thank you so much. And I hope you can be reporting on that. I've always encouraged Customs to please report on your successes with those dogs so that the community can see that our investment in those dogs is really what we need to do and to continue that. At the hearing on extending the lease, right, or your ability to build this building, you also talked about discussions with the A G's office and the opioid settlement. Have you pursued funding from that settlement towards these purposes or towards other customs purposes such as the dogs?
No, ma'am. If I'm not mistaken, there was a priority that the A G F already set for the utilization of funding. But I'm not, we haven't requested any funding from that part. Our funding has been incorporated to the Edward Burns Memorial Grant in which we have received an additional hundred thousand dollars to enhance not only a drug detected dog, but also our other task force that we work with the federal government.
Great, well, that's great that what you've done. I'm bringing up the opioid settlement because that was discussed by you as a potential funding source for this. But, okay, the other potential funding source I wanted to explore is, so the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress gives four-hundred-and-thirty million to the U.S. Customs and Border Protection for construction and modernization of land ports of entry and equipment and fixtures for operations. I'm wondering if you have been able to pursue any of that money from U.S. Customs or pursue any of the infrastructure money given to the governor of Guam, which is about one-hundred-and-ninety-three million for this type of project, which is, I believe, critical infrastructure at our port. And or if any of that infrastructure money has been allocated to the port directly, if you're able to pursue that from the port as, you know, part of their expansion efforts?
Senator, at this point in time, I've yet to receive any official notice from the fun office insofar as the allocations for this funding that's coming in. And I've already made communications with the clearinghouse to see where we stand under this new proposed construction bill. And hopefully, I'm hoping that there's some room there to provide some sort of funding for my agency. But I will be pursuing that.
I certainly hope so because it sounds like a perfect match, right? The border protections, equipment, fixtures, and yeah, so hopefully you can get from U.S. Customs. Appreciate your testimony, Chief and Director and Mr. Chair Sisusmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Sabina Beres, ma'am, do you have any comments or questions for the, on the bill or for Mr. Peredo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Peredo, for your testimony and all the work that you've done. And, you know, I was in one of those briefings and tours that you provided and the work that you're doing despite the lack of resources. So I think it's our intent as a legislature to ensure that you get the resources that you need to address such a high priority in our community, drug interdiction being one and invasive species too as well. So I think my colleagues asked many questions and maybe I can add to the list of possible funding sources. The high intensity drug trafficking area, I know the A G put in an application for that. Do you have any updates on the status of that?
Yes, Senator, I've met with the A G on the Haida application. And the A G has prepared an application. And I'm not sure whether it's already been forwarded, but I think there's a timeline as to when we can, where the government will submit. And in this case, the A G is the one handling the application. But yes, we are applying from a law enforcement standpoint.
Yeah, I do hope you get that, you know, you're successful in getting that because that does have some attached to it. The one thing that I will ask regarding the bill, so in one of the sections it talks about, should the agency not, so for instance, it starts the A and E process but fails to start construction. If it doesn't start construction by September thirty, twenty-two, then you would have to return all funds to the general fund. How confident are you to quickly, you know, as far as a timeline, do you have an agency that's going to assist you to put together a package so that you have the A and E followed by the construction? Have you thought-
Yes, go ahead.
Have you thought of-
Yes, we've been working with not only the Port Authority of Guam. And again, to their, if you look at my testimony, W S P has provided us a conceptual design for this particular infrastructure. And I've been working with Public Works in helping us put together the initial plan for the construction. And so we have all this information that we can put forward should we start to allocate funding for the A and E.
Okay, so but there's a deadline that's given in the bill. Are you confident that you will start construction by September thirty, twenty-two?
Yes, I'm fully looking forward in making sure that I move forward with this project and I'm making it a top priority.
And is there anything that would impede that progress? So let's say you didn't get the funding or the A and E took a little longer. I mean, what kind of lead time do you need between design and construction?
We just got to manage our tag and make sure that if we need to extend, then that's when we have to go again before the legislative body and then request for an extension.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think that's pretty much my question. So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director.
Thank you, Senator Beres. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for Mr. Peredo or a comment on the bill? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I think we can all agree, as mentioned earlier, that this is a needed facility. I think the only thing you hear, the concerns, including from you, Mr. Chair, is the funding aspect is, how do we address financing? And I don't think the language that's included to have this fifteen million dollars come out of the general fund is really a viable source of funding because as we're all aware, we don't even know as we're looking at this upcoming fiscal year, really, what our revenue stream is going to be. And as our federal funds decrease, we're not going to be able to sustain our current government operations. And it doesn't look in the near future unless some major dramatic thing happens with regards to COVID that we're going to have a viable tourism industry. So I think as, you know, I just echo the concerns from our other colleagues as well. It's just a question of the funding. And I just think it's unreasonable that that's going to come out of the general fund, considering all the other obligations we're looking at as we look at the budget, all the key operations that we're going to need to address. Just to give you some background, Mr. Chair, with regards to the former location of Warehouse Two. That, the demolition of that particular facility really had to do with the need to have an operational wharf. And removing, it's quite sizable. It's one of the largest of the warehouses that were located out there in the yard. But its close proximity to the wharf really made it an impediment to properly segregate the yard with our containers, one of the Coast Guard requirements to keep the containers segregated from break bulk cargo. And then, of course, you have all the vehicles and all the other type of cargo that come out that are not containerized that they wanted to have a separate location. So that's really what led to the demolition of Warehouse Number Two as a result of the, not necessarily the modernization, but primarily the fifty million dollars the D O D provided to upgrade the port facility to meet the intended demands and expectations of growth here on the island. And so that's what happened to that particular warehouse. This was not intended to remove the facility for Customs to operate on. But obviously, we've seen for quite some time, Customs has not had additional resources or the revenue stream to address constructing a facility such as this. And as you know, Mr. Chair, as we look at, you know, these type of construction in the government, in most cases, most of those projects are almost always financed. I mean, even the port itself, when we left, we were able to, you know, as you know, procure a seventy-two million dollar bond to address improvements and also repairs to the facility. But again, even the Port Authority with its revenue stream had to go out and finance that. That was not something that it in and of itself annually could simply take out of its budget and do. So, I mean, we're certainly open if Customs can look at that aggressively, other alternative funding. And I know they're at a disadvantage with their rates, but that's, you know, that's the reality, unfortunately. But I don't want to be unfair to them to say, sure, we support this bill. And maybe at some point, they get a trickle of money out of the general fund somewhere down the road. I don't think that's going to meet their needs. So I think if an alternate fund, funding and a viable funding source could be looked at, certainly we would be supportive of Customs having their facility constructed. With that, Mr. Chair, I have no further comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Mr. Peredo, what is the fee you charge or that you collect from all your inspections down at the port? Because this is for the port facility. What amount of revenue do you generate from that? You're muted. I unmute, unmute, so we can hear you.
Okay, Senator, we're averaging between three-hundred thousand to between four and three-hundred thousand a year.
All right, all right, okay. And have you had an increase on the rate on what you're charging down there? Because, you know, as there's a lot of movement going on down there, and I'm not proposing you raise the fee, but it's to make it reasonable. And as you mentioned earlier, at least to own maybe a building down there, it'll pay for itself. And then when it ends, then you can roll back the rates or help improve other equipment and facilities you may need for the future. Have you folks thought about that? Because I'm not too sure because I'm very concerned because there are other issues that are going to come in line with Customs. They need to start getting the revenue from doing all these inspections, you know, such as the cigarette, alcohol, everything. You guys play a major role. And I'm just wondering, if the fees you're charging, how old are the fees that you've collected? Are those ten, fifteen, twenty years old?
At least ten years.
At least ten.
Okay, so I think your agency needs to take a look at that because everybody else has increased their fees based on the time. You know, after ten years, G P D has done that. I think everybody else has considered that because why? The cost of services increased. Something to consider. Because we do support what the intent of this bill is, but the source of funding is our only concern. Senator Brown, as correction, Senator Moreland, do you have anything? You can provide us a closing statement and then we'll adjourn this hearing and we'll get ready for the next hearing. Next bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I appreciate all the comments today. Thank you also, Director, for explaining and answering most of the questions there. I guess I provided a brief, brief closing. Well, basically, if we go into the first line of what was introduced, it says no more than fifteen million. Does that mean they have to give fifty million? No, it's no more than fifty million. What if this bill was able to pass and it can give enough money to provide for the A and E? Well, that's no more than fifteen million. I think something is better than nothing to get this thing started. If our intent is to get that this is an urgent matter, then start the A and E now. And then as we go into the budget, then we can look at additional fundings that we're all concerned about making sure we have the right fundings. But in the meantime, an A and E takes time. And we've already discovered through the past C R E Rs that we even dedicated money for tax refunds, twenty million and twenty-five million, also to the LEAP program, which is a good thing. You mean to tell me we can't get no more than fifteen million in order to provide what's so critical for the Guam Customs Authority to get it built? I think there's funding available and we're not spending fifty million. It's no more than, so you can appropriate something. But at least we're directing the governor who has said this needs to be done in a timely manner. There's no reason why we had to wait for the budget process to get the simple A and E going, as the director has explained. And ten percent of the total amount of project, I think, is affordable that we can simply find as we found for, as we found for the tax refunds and we found for the LEAP program as well. And that at the same time, we're hoping by then, with the hard work of the director and the customs agency and their planning folks there, that you do find some other grants, that you do work with the clearinghouse, that you do get additional fundings. And then when we come to the budget time, we can look at, okay, so where are we at at this point? But in the meantime, we really need to get started. And Mr. Director, if you need a little bit more money to get a shovel, then to dig the hole at the grounds, you start construction yourself because you got to get this going, right? And this is simply a measure to start. It's not the total answer. It's just simply a measure to start. And the best you can do from this bill is to get enough money to do the A and E. Well, thank goodness, right? So that's what I'm hoping we can understand here. We're at the closest we've ever been to finally getting this thing ground broken. We are extended at least another five more years. And the longer we wait, it's going to come closer and closer. I'll be more than happy to write another bill to extend it for another five years. But why not if we had the opportunity at this time to at least give them something? No more, but if it's less, I'm sure the customs director will be more than willing to get this started and has some plans in mind. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you, my colleagues, and I thank the director. Hopefully, we can get this bill moving forward. And as explained by the governor, it's a timely manner. As explained by my colleagues, it's also a timely manner. If we can do something, eventually we can do the rest. So let's start today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Senator Moreland. We're going to do something. There's no one else to testify on this bill, two-one-eight dash thirty-six L S. The committee will continue to receive testimony. And please provide, submit your testimony to the Merrowm of the Guam Bless H R two email at senatorjoessenauxie@gmail.com. My colleagues, this will now, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and providing feedback and suggestion. This public hearing is now adjourned for Bill two-one-eight dash thirty-six. It is now two-twenty. Sisusmasi, we will now take a short recess while we set up to go on for Bill two-two-three dash thirty-six, which is an act to add section eight-five-five to the Guam Code and date to designate Route Three as Ben Blas Boulevard. Thank you. Just a few minute recess while we get the folks out there. Thank you, Ike. Be safe. The Committee Alpha Day, the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, January fourteen. The time now is two twenty-eight. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you very patient and for coming to Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Those of this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, January third, and on change one on January fourth and January eleventh. The agenda for this this afternoon is now moved to Bill two two three dash thirty-six U R, introduced by Senator Chris Duenez, co-sponsor by Tony Ada and Senator Frank Boss Junior, an act to add new section eight five five to Title One Guam Code Annotated to designate Route Three as Ben Blas Boulevard. I remind my colleagues that I think I have the same colleagues, the the rules of engagement, and to the participants. The Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff, and we will move all Zoom participants to a call upon. Members of the committee and noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individuals testifying shall per be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmeeted. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference is not, and testifying is not permitted. See, personal inference as their character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of general rule or conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your removal from the meeting livestream. If you're having a drink or having a snack, there's no objection to that. I'd like to recognize my colleagues that have joined us this afternoon. And we have, we have the author of the bill, Senator Duenez. We have Senator Tony Ada. We have Senator James Woodland. We have Madam Speaker Theresa Lyne, Senator Telo Titegwe, and Senator Parrish. We will. Now, I ask Senator Duenez to provide her his opening statement on his bill. Thank you, sir.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to discuss Bill two two three thirty-six. As you've read the title, a relatively simple bill, but I think very important one, to name Route Three after one of Guam's favorite sons, I believe, General Ben Blas, and name it to Ben Blas Boulevard. You know, Mr. Chairman, I introduced this bill on November ten. November ten has two special meanings to me. First of all, my father's birthday. So then it became easy for me to remember the birthday of the United States Marine Corps. And and so when I thought about this opportunity and and I was so glad to be joined by Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Boss, and I hope that I could get all my colleagues, including you, Mr. Chairman, and others. It was kind of time sensitive because I wanted to meet the birthday. But I hope you would join me on this effort. As we know, Mr. Chairman, you know, on October one, twenty twenty, Marine Base Camp Blas was activated. And we were all very familiar with the current military buildup and the activities on Guam surrounding the Marine Corps. And, you know, I think that the United States government, the United States Armed Forces made a very, very good decision to name the the, you know, Camp Blas, of course, in honor of, once, once again, as I said, one of Guam's favorite sons. You know, when we look at, you know, it's been recognized over the decades and and the years, Mr. Chairman, the character and the accomplishments of General Ben Blas. First of all, many of us know that one of his favorites loves and and passions was as to be a farmer. And he was a good farmer. He was, he tilled the land and and he loved Guam more than anything else, I believe. We know that he was a wonderful family man, beautiful children, and very accomplished at being a good family man. We know, of course, that he rose to the highest levels of being a flag officer and a general. And and then, of course, we know that he also served us well in Congress. Mr. Chairman, this, like I said, may be a simple gesture, but I think a very important one. And 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 I want to join and attempt to, in some way, match the recognition that our our federal government, our armed forces have given to to bestow this honor of this base to be named after General Ben Blas. And I think that the road leading to Camp Blas, whether you're going north or south on Route Three, you know, to be named General Ben Blas Boulevard, is is definitely most appropriate. I will say, because the question may come up, I did work with a little bit of alliteration here. I know that we have boulevards on Guam that are somewhere between point seven miles and maybe in excess of one point five miles. You know, if if there's any concerns raised by public works in the future in terms of, you know, boulevard versus highway, we certainly can amend it in 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 committee. But I think we might be able to be able to use the title. But if not, no matter what, I think that 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 routed road should reflect the dignity and the honor that I believe Guam should bestow on this great gentleman and in memory and also in commemoration of, you know, our local government will also step up to to name this highway leading to this very, very important Camp Blas and the mission of protecting our nation, most especially our island and our people. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I I really look forward to the hearing, the testimony on Bill two two three thirty-six. And once again, I invite invite all members present and and as this bill hopefully hits the floor sometime soon, maybe the February session, to join us co-sponsors. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duenez. And yes, I I do support this bill. I'm maybe an offer to you and to my colleagues and to even the folks that will be testifying, that maybe we can change it to General Ben Blas Memorial Highway. And and that should capital. And then there'll be no no debate about the Boulevard part, okay, Senator Duenez? And with that, we would have, we'll begin with my general from the National Guard, Major General Robert Languero. Remove. You're first. And then we'll we'll have my Uncle Joe's, another Marina E nine, speak. Thank you, sir. Major General Languero.
Senator, thank you for the opportunity. And just for the record, it's my retired rank as Brigadier General. People don't realize that when you serve and and you need to serve at a certain time period to retire at that rank. And although I was a Major General, you need to serve three years, and I didn't serve three years. I had eighteen months. So I'm a retired Brigadier General, and I'd be, I prefer to be called Retired Brigadier General. So thank you for the honor, Senator. So I just thank you, Senators, for taking time to for this bill and providing me the opportunity to testify for Bill two two three, which names Route Three indebted to Ben Blas Memorial Highways, that which you said, Senator. So I was, from my perspective, the Office of the Highway, Department of Public Works, they work hard to identify and maintain primaries, secondary, and tertiary roads. And most roads are identified by route number. Having route numbers is okay for reading a map. But most people, it's easier to identify a name for a route, not just a number. Just about everyone knows Route One or Marine Corps Drive. It is named Marine Corps Drive because that is the avenue of approach the Marine Corps took when liberating Guam. Other roads, like Route Fifteen, that's from Chalampago to the back gate to Anderson Air Force Base, that is called the Seventy-seventh Infantry Division Drive. That route is the avenue of approach the U.S. Army took to liberate the island of Guam. Both these routes have historical value and significant meaning to honor and remember the Marines and the U.S. Army. Naming these routes Marine Corps Drive and Seventy-seventh Infantry Division Highway is significant to preserve preserving the true history of Guam. And naming Route Three the Ben Blas Memorial Highway would help future generations remember General Ben Blas. As you all know, General Blas was the first Chamorro to become a general officer in the Marine Corps. And he continues his service to the people of Guam by serving as a representative of Congress, United States Congress for Guam. And I was very fortunate to be able to attend his funeral services in Arlington Cemetery. And I was in awe as I watched the United States honor General Blas with a twenty-one cannon salute, not a gun salute, but a cannon salute. In his life, General Blas took different approaches or different roads to serve our country and our island. And naming Route Three Ben Blas Boulevard would be Guam's way of honoring General Blas. Route Three connects Camp Blas to the island. And it will serve, it was, it will honor a service member who served in difficult times and preserve his namesake while preserving our true history. And so, again, thank you for your, this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sen Augustin, Uncle Joe, chart E nine, Marine Corps, sir, your turn.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Senators. I want to, first of all, thank the committee and the author of Bill two two three dash thirty-six, an act to add a new section to eight five five to Title One Guam Code Annotated to designate Route Three as Ben Blas Boulevard or otherwise Major General, Brigadier General Ben Blas Memorial Highway, whichever you all come up with. I'm in favor of both. The designation of this appears to be the intersection of Route One by G R M C all the way up to the main gate of the Anderson Air Force Base to be renamed as such Ben Blas Boulevard. For the record, I am also the chairperson for the Guam Veterans Commission, the president of the Third Marine Division Association Guam Chapter. And also, I served thirty years in the Marine Corps. So this becomes something very near and dear to my heart and simply something that you don't need to do much math to say this is the right thing to do by by our leaders and would be much appreciated, not just by Mr. Ben Blas's family, but also those that have served in the military, not just Marine Corps, but in the military and those that are currently serving, to let them know that our patriotic, our patriotism as Chamoros is here to stay. And by you all doing this, and I'm hoping that all fifteen senators do agree to 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 vote this bill to 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 name Route Three Ben Blas Boulevard, the the right thing to do. It was introduced in November ten by by our committee chair there, Mr. Christopher Duenez. And the the unique part of that is that was the Marine Corps birthday also. As we know, General Ben Blas was born in February of nineteen twenty-eight. And like the Mr. Chair earlier indicated, he's known as the son of Guam. We don't want to take that away from everybody else that have served and continue to serve. That we want them all to be the sons and daughters of Guam because they are all serving. But the uniqueness of this is that our patriotism, our patriotic duty to do something to recognize the hardship and the service that this particular individual had done would mean a lot to the service members that have served and continue to serve. It's in honor of Mr. Vicente Tomas Garido Blas, who served in the Marine Corps in nineteen fifty-one to nineteen eighty. I wasn't even born in fifty-one, and he served for thirty years. After he retired in nineteen eighty, he pursued a career in the House of Representatives from eighty-five to ninety-three. You couldn't be more patriotic than that. But in saying that, this is a reflection of our Chamorro block, our Chamorro spirit, that we want to continue to serve regardless of we've done our due diligent duty in the service. He retired as a Brigadier General in nineteen eighty, and he was well known as the first high-ranking Chamorro in the Marine Corps. He's a gentleman of such a distinct, a distinguished career. Currently, Camp Blas located on what is Route Three, only fitting to be designated as Ben Blas Boulevard. That's coming from north, Anderson Air Force Base, Midway, coming from the Route One by G R M C. And you find Camp Blas right in the center. You couldn't go wrong. He is much deserving because he was also a commanding officer in nineteen seventy-two for the Ninth Marine Regiment, one of the major unit that actually liberated Guam during World War Two. So this speaks volume as to the the magnificent duties and action that this gentleman has bestowed as a Chamorro. So I so I want to put this out that, you know, it's such a significant So I want to put this out that, you know, it's such a significance and that it's a reflection of the gentleman and the service that he served. But also, I want this to go a longer ways to be able to have those that have served and continue to serve to acknowledge that, hey, this gentleman is not a number, it's not Route One, it's not Route Three, it's now Ben Blas or General Ben Blas Memorial Highway. In saying that, I just want to thank you all for pursuing, you know, good things for our service members, those that have served and continue to serve. And I hope to see this bill passed by all fifteen Senators. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. San Augustin. And just from my colleagues for information that in two thousand eight, while I was the chairman of the Board of Education, we were able to get the Okadu High School to be the Marine Corps ROTC. And it just happened to coincide. You got Marine Base across the street. And once we can get this passed, it may be Ben Blas Boulevard or the Memorial Highway. And then you got Marine Drive. So it all intersects perfectly. With that, I ask Senator, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to pose to the individuals that have testified?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. Just like to thank the retired General Rodrick Lenguero for his testimony and also retired Master Gun San Augustin for his testimony as well. It's great to see our service members out in support of these type of legislations that recognizes our local heroes. And I thank them for their testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Senator Moynihan, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to pose?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate the testimonies provided. I thank the author for this bill. I think it's an excellent, excellent thing to name Ben Blas for this Boulevard or Memorial Highway. I think it would inspire also the young troops that will be going into this fort eventually and hopefully inspire them to strive to be their highest and do their best and possibly inspire a lot of other, of our local younger generations to join the service as well. I'm looking forward to the bill moving forward. I appreciate the comments made. And for the sponsor there, I appreciate being added as a co-sponsor eventually. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Madam Speaker, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to pose?
Yes, and I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the sponsor for this bill and those who testified in regards to why it is very fitting to honor and, of course, our General Ben Blas with the naming of this highway. I want to just state for the record, you know, my thoughts on this is that yes, the road itself has historical value, right? And they discussed its value or its importance historically during the war or after the war and with the Marines' history. But really, this road, this highway also borders, you know, many other things in Guam's history, including Lati settlements, including Magua villages, Saban and Fadang, which have pretty much been wiped out off, you know, from recognition at this point. So I hoping in this ceremony where we honor the history of this area that we are able to acknowledge that as well and that the Chamoros in this area, you know, also had a very important part during the occupation of Guam by the Japanese. And I think Brigadier General Lenguero's family has a history in this as well. The, you know, tweet involvement on Guam and the suffering that the Chamorro people endured because of their protection of him, things like that. Probably, I know that there is a history being conducted right now or a survey being conducted right now of the history of the families of this area. But I'm sure we'd all be honored to recognize General Blas for many things. And I want to just state a couple of them. So General Blas was very famous for one of his quotes where he says, "We are equal in war, but not in peace", recognizing the inequality between US citizens residing in the territories and those living in the fifty states. As our congressman, he was a huge advocate for war claims and that the people of Guam be treated equally. He also, I believe he was the first non-white person to become a general in the Marine Corps. And he was very, you know, adamant about education and as an advocate of education for the people of Guam. One of the quotes also was that, quote, "We had been told for generations, for example, that should we join the Navy, we were worthy to serve as servants, as stewards. My generation began to ask, and why not officers? There was no reply. And so slowly at first, and then with accelerating force, we set out on a quest to achieve our self-determination as a people, economically, culturally, and politically." And he wrote this for a book commemorating the fiftieth anniversary of the liberation of Guam. Of course, he was a survivor of the occupation of Guam and pressed into service by the Japanese and forced to help construct the airfield at Tezen. And then pursued his education at the University of Notre Dame and joining the Marine Corps. But he, you know, as our congressman, I have, you know, I am very glad that, you know, we will be recognizing his work throughout his life because he described, he also wrote a book, you know. So he's done so much for all of us here on Guam by his advocacy, his writing, his stressing, and his example, of course, maybe more than anything. But one of the other things that he talked about was how the Japanese occupation of Guam was harsh by any standard. Civilians were forced to work and provide for the Japanese while being deprived of basic necessities. They suffered punishments and indignities at the hands of the occupying forces. "We clearly saw and cleanly appreciated the basic choices of life between freedom and bondage, justice and oppression, hope and despair, surviving and perishing." So he wrote about this. And he wrote that the eyes of his generation were open to the injustices of the past and ready to change in the future. And so I just want to commend him, of course, and commend those who are testifying in favor of this bill and commend the choice for the naming of this highway and hope that in doing so, we can remember the full history of this man, the full history of that generation, and how they have led us to where we are today, led us in perseverance, led us in, you know, striving to be better in every way, in education, in the service that we provide for our island and our country and in all of it, Mr. Chair. So I'm very grateful. And sisus massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Telo, do you have any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think the speaker said it so eloquently and provided such great insight as to who this person was. A great patriot, a great statesman. He, I met him only once, though, in my life. And he just seemed so larger than life, you know, when I did meet him. I've had a chance, though, to, you know, be friends with his son. And hearing the stories from here, it's just amazing. And he's always, I probably could never, you know, do as much as my father did. I said, I think just being alive and keeping his legacy alive is the best you can do at this point for him. So greatly appreciate the comments being made by General Blas. And it's very touching. And not only that, Mr. Chair, I do want to ensure that everything that's needed, especially in the physical note where it talks about how DPW gave an estimated cost on how much this will be for materials or labor. It says that the Route Three traffic light, six each, would cost about fifteen hundred dollars each and about nine thousand. This is an estimate covers removal of existing sign plates, placement of sign stickers or plates, installation of signs. If no existing signs, fifteen percent will be added to the total cost of materials and labor, which brings it to about ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And then Route Three connecting routes for each at five hundred each. They're talking about the signs, Mr. Chair, and two thousand is estimated. So you're looking at about, with a fifteen percent increase, you're looking at about twelve thousand six hundred dollars for this in order to, you know, fully recognize General Blas and put these signs up for everyone to see and remind themselves of this great man. That's why I was hoping to hear from DPW, Mr. Chair, because it does talk about DPW having to incur these costs. I know it's minimal at twelve thousand, but has there been any comment coming from DPW? Whether they'll be able to cover this cost?
No, Senator Telo, there hasn't been any, but I don't believe the cost is gonna delay this bill. I know my colleagues were gonna support this. We'll figure this out. It's not like it's gonna happen overnight. We'll be able to take care of it.
Okay, I guess the bill can move forward, but you know, the construction of, you know, recognizing it, it's very important as well. So I'd like to thank those who came to testify and like to thank the speaker for doing, for providing all that information about this great man. You know, you did him justice. Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Duenez, would you like to provide a closing statement, please, sir?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman. And to retired Brigadier General Rodrick Lenguero, thank you for being here today and providing your testimony to Master Guns, you know, Mr. Joe San Augustin. Very, it was an honor for you both to be here today and testify in favor. Mr. Chairman, want to put this on the record. If DPW has a problem with twelve thousand dollars, I will raise that money. In fact, I'll write a check. Not a problem. We'll make this happen. But this is very important for the people of Guam. I know some others that couldn't be here today have sent me messages. In fact, the day after, so many of our military members and retired and active were just so happy to see this introduction. Master Guns, you oversaw, you know, an amazing retirement ceremony just a few days ago for one of our sons of Guam as well, Mr. Santiago. Just to see his family and so many people from the south, from the west, or from Iran, from Matak, coming up to honor truly what happens when our people serve and give potentially all and just to recognize our great nation and, of course, our island. You're absolutely right, Master Guns. The truth is, is that I think that's what General Blas did, was he made us even more proud. Because I am proud of every single individual who serves our island and serves our people in our legislature and just throughout Guam. So I look forward, Mr. Chairman, and also I have some commitments also from some organizations that would like to add to the liberation festivities this year, actually. You know, we have a number of things coming up. And so perhaps we'll have this in time for that. But like I said, money will not be an object on this issue. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, for hearing Bill 23636. And thank you once again for everyone attending today.
Thank you, Senator Duenez, for offering your check. But I know with the Master Guns, with Joe San Augustin and the other veterans organizations that exist out there, it'll happen. It's what they say in the military, we just make it happen. We don't make, we don't take excuses for anything. We need to get something done, we just get it done. There won't be any show of that. There's no other individuals to testify. The committee will continue to receive testimony. And please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Press HR through email at senatorjoestenovsin@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. This public hearing is now adjourned for Bill 223-36. The time now is two fifty-nine. Sisus Massey, and we will take a few-minute recess and then we'll get ready for the, for Senator Telo's bill, Bill 225-36, OR. It is an act to appropriate nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty cents from the General Fund, Fund Three Oh Nine, Annual Fractional Laws to the Guam Ancestral Land Commission, augmenting operational capacity to the Minister of the Ancestral Property Rights Claim for excess lands returned by the federal government. Sisus Massey, and we'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, January 14, 2022. The time now is 3:07. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for coming to this Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandate. Notice for this public hearing, we're disseminating the email to all centers and all media broadcasters on Monday, January 3, and change one on January 4 and January 11. The agenda, the final bill for the day is Bill 225-36COR introduced by Senator Tello T. Tidaway, co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa Lai, Senator Brown, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and myself, Senator Sinocin. An act to appropriate $9,169.40 from the General Fund, Fund 309, again, a fractional loss to the Guam Ancestral Land Commission, augmenting operational capacity to administer ancestral property rights claim for excess land returned by the federal government. This Zoom is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individual testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes and called to speak. Please ensure that you are unmuted. Questioned testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any center or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule or conduct will result in your move from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure that the video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. If you're having a drink or having a snack, there will be no objection there. Okay, I would like to thank my colleagues for attending this absolute hearing. We have the sponsor, Senator Tello Tidaway. We have the co-sponsor, Speaker Theresa Lai, Senator Tonyada, and I believe we have other colleagues that probably be joining. Once they become visible, then we'll be able to recognize them. With that, I ask Senator Tello Tidaway, the sponsor of the bill, to go ahead and please provide us our opening statement. Ma'am?
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much and for scheduling this public hearing on this Bill 225-36. And for the opportunity to briefly introduce the measure, you know, with the supportive speaker, Trelahi, Senator Brown, Senator Perez, Senator Blas, and yourself, you know, I introduce Bill 225, which transfers funding from the defunct Hagatnya Fractional Lot Fund to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. You know, recognize the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission will need to request for additional funds in their annual budget request going forward. Bill 225 appropriates $90,169.40 to supplement the agency's FY 2022 budget of $408,553. You know, the funds are authorized for personal salaries and benefits for up to two land agents and for computers, printers, and software necessary to digitize land document records and the abstract of property ownership data. You know, Mr. Chair, it was during an oversight hearing on November 18, 2021, involving the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, where Mr. John Birch, Executive Director of Ancestral Lands, shared that his agency continues to face a serious staffing shortage. According to Mr. Birch, there are hundreds of acres of excess federal properties pending transfer, and that Galak has thousands of fragile land records pending digitization. After 25 cabinets full of fragile termite-ridden John Bond civil cases, land records were transferred from the Department of Land Management. You know, with an office that includes only one land agency and administrative officer, Mr. Birch communicated in no uncertain terms that this agency is overwhelmed and is in dire need of any additional help, which Bill 225 intends to provide. Mr. Chair, with respect to the funding source identified in Bill 225, DOA provided a written testimony back in September of 2021 on a separate measure, which is now Public Law 36-71, authorizing the closure of inactive special funds, including Fund 309 Hagatya Fractional Lots Fund. Notwithstanding BBMR's fiscal note on the measure dated June 25, 2021, which recognized an uncollected balance of $90,169.40 for the Hagatya Fractional Lots Fund, Director Ed Burns' testimony dated September 14, 2021 stated, quote, "As noted, the special purpose funds, which are the subject of the bill, are all inactive and carry balances of zero or less than $1, with the exception of Fund 309, a Gania fractional lot, which carries a balance of $90,169.40." And according to BBMR fiscal note on Bill 225 dated December 15, 2021, the agency commuted further that DOA on the Gania fractional lots fund and concluded that the fund should have been cleared as an uncollectible many years ago, as it is a carryover balance from fiscal year 1987. Mr. Chair, I look to this committee for any help is available extended so that we can all get to the bottom of this issue on how much money is truly in this account? Is it collectible? Can it be collectible? And determine whether the funds are available to support the intent of this Bill 225? And if funds were available at one point but were transferred thereafter, this legislature must know who's responsible for restoring the missing funds. So I look forward, Mr. Chair, to discuss, including possible amendments to the bill going forward, to assist the Guam Ancestral Lands, and I'm sure through the testimony of their director, you can just see how in dire need they are of this funding to assist them. And I appreciate, Mr. Chair, really for you having this public hearing today on this measure. So, and for that, I'll leave it to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tello. And with that note, even though the BBMR stated that the money may not be there, as far as I'm concerned, in the Office of Finance and Budget, it was identified that the funding was there. So as far as I'm concerned, the money's in the bank. Take it out of whatever account you need, take it out of DOA, restore it back. This bill is to move the money to the ancestral land, and that's our intent, and I'm in full support of this bill, and I hope to see it get to where it needs to go. And with that, Mr. Birch, Director John, fellow biker, you're up. Please provide your testimony, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Sinocin and members of the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. Half a day. My name is John Birch. I'm the Executive Director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, and I am here on behalf of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to testify in support of Bill Number 225-36COR. A brief history, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission was created in 1999 by Public Law 25-45. The past title of federal excess lands once returned to the government of Guam, back to the original landowners or their heirs, and to maintain a land bank trust for those dispossessed landowners who will never realize the return of their ancestral lands. In the early years, the commission was supported by employees, inclusive of the, eight employees, inclusive of the executive director. But by the year 2006, due to normal attrition and hiring freezes, the staff was eventually reduced to three employees. Then in 2012, in an effort to reduce payroll costs by decreasing the number of employees in the government of Guam, the commission was merged into the Department of Land Management through Reorganization Advisory Number 9. Recognizing the difficulties the commission was experiencing with fulfilling its responsibilities and wanting to provide direct support and governing authority to the commission, Governor Lou Leon Guerrero signed her first executive order in 2019, separating the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission from the Department of Land Management. A year later, around the weekend of March 14, 2020, the coronavirus emerged in our community. In response to the public health emergency on March 16, 2020, the governor directed the closure of all nonessential government of Guam offices, including the commission. The commission's temporary office space within the Department of Land Management was reassigned to provide necessary space for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and all of its files were secured in the Department of Land Management vault on the third floor of the ITC building. March 26, 2020, the terms of five of the seven commissioners expired. June 2020, notice was received that the executive director was retiring, and one of the two classified employees was transferring to another agency, leaving the commission with two commissioners and one classified employee and no office, making 2020 one of the most challenging years for the commission. The governor immediately assigned an acting executive director and an administrative officer to the commission, and before year end, although our community remained in PCOR 1, the commission was up and running and was operating out of, again, its temporary office on the seventh floor of the ITC building with seven confirmed members of the Board of Commissioners, supported now by two unclassified employees and one classified employee. In fiscal year 2021, the commission became financially independent from the general fund, funded exclusively by lease proceeds received from Crown Lands at Polaris Point. Currently, these leases produce a sustained annual income of $291,376.56. Although the commission's Survey Infrastructure and Development Fund had accumulated sufficient funds to carry it through fiscal year 2021, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research saw fit to limit the commission's budget releases to reflect the sustained annual income from these lease proceeds. Needless to say, fulfilling the commission's responsibility and keeping its doors open was a challenge in fiscal year 2021. Currently, we are in negotiations for the lease of the remaining 13 acres of Polaris Point. If successful, we predict we should meet the commission's fiscal year 2022 appropriated budget of $408,553, which mirrors the commission's fiscal year 2021 budget. The commission's current budget appropriation allows us to continue with current operations as is, without much room for any improvement. One of our concerns is the preservation of historical documents. Some of these documents are replaceable, some are not. Probate records can be retrieved from the courts. The John Bond land settlement records may be found at the Micronesian Area Research Center at the University of Guam, but other records like communication records between the clients and the attorneys or recording sessions that produce quitclaim deeds may not be easily recovered. In April of 2021, we were able to gain better access to our files after we moved them out of the Department of Land Management Vault and into our permanent office on the third floor of the ITC building. This is when we discovered the deplorable condition of the files that filled 32 four drawer file cabinets. Some of the documents were nearly destroyed with fist-sized holes haven't been carved out of them. Others were salvageable, but still significantly damaged by termites. We also have recordings stored on old cassette tapes that are becoming brittle. We prioritize the preservation of these files and recordings and have set aside one day each week to repair and digitize them. These documents and recordings are important. Copies are often requested by title companies, attorneys, and individuals who are doing research on returned properties. We would like to place these documents on our website or in some sort of shared file where anyone can easily access them. Another concern is the possibility of losing institutional knowledge. Should the two unclassified employees be replaced and the lone land agent, who will qualify for retirement in approximately a year, decide to retire? This is a very real issue that needs to be addressed. The loss of experience-based knowledge that employee accumulated over time is very difficult to replace. A new employee may be able to perform the essential duties of the person they're replacing, but without mentoring, they have no way to replicate their predecessors' relationships, ideas, or approaches to work. The impact of losing this knowledge will slow productivity and may cause frustration and miscommunication between the employees and the clientele they serve. We would like to prevent this from happening by hiring at least two more land agents. This bill addresses these concerns by providing the commission the funds needed to hire additional personnel and to purchase necessary equipment to preserve these important public records. On behalf of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, we look forward to working with the 36 Guam Legislature to resolve these issues, and we thank you and your committee for this opportunity to testify, and we request your favorable support of Bill Number 225-36COR. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Director Birch. We have Sen. Commissioner Ronald Loguana. Tello?
Off the day, off the day. Todo Samzo, Senador dan Senadora. Um, Doncoluna Suzus Mossi, now na idun estina apotuneda. Para be fantastic, good did it. Put, uh, estina, Senada Salapi. Name, uh, gof nisisita, ni komision. The Siroan Leguanazo. Memberso ki komision. Uh, the gaygi kurasonu. Para iman ota ota nu. Dan gaygi kurasonu. Para iman urinatsha. Na duenyu. Ne estapago. Timan ma, uh, tso tso gi idinansi para sia. Usupotti estina laipri niponi. Dos dos cinco twenty-six. Odestina kinati dan salapi ni masoda. Ni keke tuha gi akansha ni. Swetina masoda na benai. Da bituna. I Senadora shia si Tello kaita gui. The Senadora. Um, uh, Therese Telahe, Joanne Brown, Sabina Perez, dan Frank Blas and August Senor na unsupotti estina, na Senada Salapi. Uh, usen supotti sa manisisita. Iman taota ta gi komision gi para ta protehi edu shia na, 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 na dokumentu. That ta, ta na gua, tso tso para edu shia ni tsumoto gui itetu. Sa uniku gi. Si, si, uh, uno na empleao gui. Si Joey. Leon Guerrero. Guiza zu na taota, mege ti ni ngonya. Za nisisita u fanma koni. Nebu na empleao. Kosa ki guiza para u. Informa zu na tungu edu na pisona shia edos ni kenagakota ma shia dos patres imanu dena. Senia ne, estina kebli. Sa magof nisisita eno para uma tso gui itetu ni para ta ilau za ta impata tatik. Itano nim gatagi man urinat na duenyu. Etigi moss kat kilo. Za dididia estina kebli. Sa hulili ki malofan tempo ni esti salapi federat ni man ahanu. Ma mapapati otu shia na ahensha. Ni man mananai mege kebli. Me gai na manai kebli ni komision lingwaji, trescientos mit para manai. The, itididia para manai man irinat na duenyu. Nisisita i, i estinalistura dan estina administracion u ispiya empeñu. So ma manai ofama maapasi. Iman urinat na duenyu kulolona. Ut fin, eti shia gi para ma atsaji. Espetad kita nunia. Ungan in sasanga por esti salapi lo, i, i punto gini salapi magai para ma shia. Shia usano na salapi gi federat. Tanapan chang kilo i hinasunia iman taota ta. Eni gi para ta ajuda iman taota ta. Za kumo hamzu in, ina ispiya empeñu. Za impangogo gi federat gi, gi estina administracion za uma apasi. Kontodo ju shia gi zatitan, sati pareo itu tabentu para todo. Bahan shia man mananai ta ti ni tanunia. Atuka ma maapasi sta. Za man manai ta ti ni tanunia. Ki espesialmenti gi zatitan. Bula shia man manai ta ti ni tanunia. Bula man manrisibi lokki gi di di federat na salapi. The first mama kwek kentana estama maapasi ju shia gi za ego stio. Bula lokki man maapasi sta. Za man manai ta ti ni tanunia. First, zangin para u ma fa, ma atsaji nei edu na loga nei. Malo za ta tso gui idinansi. Sa sin tonu, sin taota. Ta za balita. Za eni gi gi di ni ispiritu ni manainata na usasangan esti. Etigi na ta 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 man gaygit na manatatu git para iman taota ta ze etigi. Na man, man matatatu hamzu kenalokki. First, uh, eni gi na zauna, na, na, uma, masoda ma gayre esti na salapi sa estama sasangan na. Ta za salapi gi gi di estina akon lo Senor San Augustin. Ungan legmanawa na siguru na ma transferi esti. Na kebli sa ma gof nisisita edu shia na ta taugis. Iri si guni direktor za ni si Joey za ni si Kathy. Etza i ches gi empleao. Ba dos na ajudo lo temporaria atu man manajududa. Gi di notra na programa do misbut tresa. Na empleao za ma stat kilo gi si Joey. Hamzu toda gi, 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 man gayta nu tumungu estina taota. Mege ti ni ngonya za debilita protehi gui sa estapo hanu asta taota. Za debilita na gua otu para u cirilizu na tso tso. Za, za u kontinua pa ta noai ta ti. Iman urinat shia na duenyu ni tanunia. Ki put sia de manainahu maniluhu. Ispiya za ena intusi. Iman magas za u, u ma tso gui idinansi. Sa hagas man ma fa baba hit ni federat. Itempon gera man ma libri hit loti giratasu. Ti ta tungu man masasabit ma ma castiga ta ta ta. Alemano ane manhodum. I marino za ni militon. Ba shempia u fanmago za u manashepia. Etigi lenya para manashepia. Ti para ma matsuli. Permanente. Estama lovepan marsi setenta y cinco años. Bula man manai ta ti tonu. Lo bula gaya ya ta nu kita nunia popodung gi federat. Lo kulolona moss popodung gi gobernamentu. Estina gobernamentu. Debby di uspiya empeñu zo noai ta ti. Pa oshino napanmago za napansatispetu. Iman taota ta. Sa hagasa atu na tonu. Tanunia. Za mamutitzu, mamutiloku i familia shia. Ma maput i tempo. Man tata za hitsa na taota ta ni misbut za moru. Okoke. Kumo okoke tanu. Etza pa bisangan Doncoluna Suzus Mossi. Ma, um, uh, uh, i, i kumehelulu esti na laia Senator Tello ta ikvi Suzus Mossi no. Na un, un guaguaduk esti za todu i, ipo malu shia na Senador za Senadora ni, ni sumo popotti esti. Za u fa fa si ipo malu todu kinsi. Za uma, ma, ma supotti esti za uma bota za uma pasa. Za man na ispiya tanu za man na guaha. Minauli para todo ju shia. Iman taota ta ni estapago manananga para ma manai ta ti ni tanu. Pa oshino ma pasi za manapanchang kilu hinasunia. Suzus Mossi. Za ma pu itestigo.
Thank you, Ron. Um, you know, folks, John, when, when, when you come up to the budget time, uh, please make sure you identify funding for all the employees that you need because even as we go pursue this bill, we're, we, we, we do not look just at, just now, we're looking at for the future because twenty-three is gonna come up. And you're gonna need funding to maintain these employees. Once we can get this bill through, you get to hire folks, but then you, you can't maintain them if you don't get it in the budget. Okay, John? So make sure, uh, you're ready for that because I'm, I'm going to support ancestral digitize. There's a lot of things you need to do there. And we need to get the record clear. Um, with that, Madam Speaker, the Oversight Chair on, on ancestral anyway, ma'am.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I appreciate, uh, the Director Birch and Commissioner Leguana for their testimony today. Um, I agree with you. It is very important, e- extremely important right now that we give ancestral lands commission whatever they need to, to really be able to address these ancestral lands. I think we are facing, you know, what looks like, um, a threat to the return of these lands to the, and to the landowners. And so our commissioners being uh, having the information at, at their fingertips through digitization, digitization is extremely important. And having the staff that you need in order to be able to notify landowners promptly if their land is, uh, being considered by the federal government for return or being considered by the government of Guam for keeping all of that. You need all of this at your disposal. Um, and you know, it's not that much money that this bill's proposing, but it's some money and it, and from the, what you've described that you would be able to use it for, it would be a very effective use of it. And I, I thank you, uh, especially Commissioner Leguana is a longtime commissioner and he's reiterating how long it has been and, and really the, the effect of many, many years of, of not, uh, fully addressing these, this issue. I mean, this is a, a big issue between Guam and the federal government, yet still between Guam government and these, and these landowners. Uh, and what we are doing here by this bill will clearly impact the history of Guam, right? We are, we are trying to rectify an injustice that is in our history and we, we want to do, we need the tools. You need the equipment, you need the personnel in order to do that. And I agree with the chairman that, um, uh, you know, when, when, even during the budget session last year, when Guam ancestral lands came in, they were capped by BBMR at two hundred and ninety thousand. That's compared to a four hundred and eight thousand. I think that they were able to use before. And so I think we were able with the chairman's, um, help to, to raise them above that cap that BBMR had set. And we have to be very, you know, we, we have to keep trying creative efforts, which is why I commend the author of the bill for, for finding the, this amount of money, which in September twenty twenty-one, the Department of Administration said the balances of funds will revert to the general fund. And so she's taking the balance that would be reverting and putting it over to ancestral lands. We're getting a testimony now from BBMR that kind of contradicts that, but I agree with the chair. If the money was taken out of a special fund that was supposed to be reserved for a special purpose by law and removed from that special fund by the Department of Administration or some other, you know, um, past governors or current governors, I'm gonna, I'm not even sure who removed this money or did not collect the funds that was due to the government. But if the account at one point said that we had this balance and that it's reverting to general fund, then by all means, I say transfer it to the ancestral lands. And, uh, let's get at least these, this equipment. And this is very important. You know, Mister Chair, you know that, uh, there's lands that we're talking about right now, Mingilau, that, uh, I have really put some pressure on this ancestral lands commission to notify the landowners. And this is a huge task when they've only got very limited personnel and they have to go through records, you know, maps, everything. And, uh, they've done an excellent job of being able to give me lists of who these landowners are. And now it's just a matter of really reaching out to them and, and all of that is labor intensive, labor intensive. Technology would greatly help and it would not only help us right now, it would help us into the future. And so, you know, the ancestral lands is, is facing many things right now. And they've been trying to make, uh, several improvements. If I could just follow up on a couple of these. So you received seventy-three thousand in ARB, ARP funds? Um, can you just maybe give us an update on that? Is, is, does that negate the need for this bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, no, it does not negate it. What we attempted to do with the ARP funds, uh, we did request for quite a bit more. All we got was seventy-three thousand, four hundred four dollars. Uh, we need to, right now, we're dependent on, still on some activities or services provided through the Department of Land Management like internet services, telephone services, and websites. Uh, we need to bring that into ancestral land, so we have control over that. Uh, we did set aside funds for digitizing. But then again, we do need the personnel to do that. If we hire personnel, we need to bring in equipment like, uh, for the workstations, which include desk and computers and all those that go with setting up a, a works, uh, station. So we were trying to do that. And that thing with the ARP, we were advised that it were to be used towards the COVID nineteen, uh, protections. And so we also, uh, set aside some of these for desk shields and PPEs that we're gonna need and other things that, uh, would allow us to continue operating. Uh, with bringing back, hopefully, if this Omicron, uh, variant, uh, you know, what's, what the surge that we're going through decreases, our, our hope is to get some equipment in so that we could bring in our commissioners for face-to-face meetings. We haven't been able to do that this time. Uh, it seemed to be a lot more. Uh, it was, I guess, more affordable to do it online than to bring them in and try to conduct live streaming. So we were trying to get equipment so that we can do that. Uh, the, the amount that's offered by the local public, uh, broadcasting station was kind of expensive for us at this time. It's like two hundred fifty dollars per the first two hours, a hundred dollars after. And that does cause an increase in price when you have two meetings a month. And also with the advertisements that go on because the word "and" was removed according to our legal console, uh, where we must livestream and also be able to conduct things uh, virtually and advertise our full advertisements, uh, our complete agenda in the, in the newspaper. Uh, that increased our costs also. It doubled that cost for advertisement. So we're counting pennies as usual. And what I'm concerned about is that, uh, our operation funds come exclusively out of our CIT account. And what we, I've kept you up to date on the amounts that we've had in there. You know, although we've, uh, do have enough money to operate this year out of our CIT, it's not sustainable until we're, for our operations, until we're able to close out negotiations for the remaining thirteen acres, uh, at Polaris Point, which will go into the CIT account for operations. Uh, that's in process right now. I'm on that committee. So I can't speak much or about it at this point in time while we're doing that. Except to let you know that it's in progress and I hope that we will be able to get enough funds to meet the appropriated amount because, uh, I thank all of you for helping us by removing us from the micromanagement of BBMR. Uh, that allowed us now to access the rest of our, uh, funds in the CIT account for this year's operation. But uh, I estimate that if we go with the current about three hundred thousand that we currently sustain every year for operational income, uh, we would, uh, in a two or three years, uh, eat up all the excess funds that we, we built up in the CIT account. I would prefer to use those monies to open up easements and other things that, uh, we are tasked to do, but we don't have the money for that. So yes, uh, what we got from the ARP does not negate the, the need for any additional funds. We could, and we really would, uh, uh, thank all of you if you can get this approved because this would, uh, really help our agency out. And it would allow us to hire a couple of extra people. In the current budget, we, we were thinking of hiring people, but because of the other expenses we have. And remember, we were shut down. When we opened up ancestral lands, uh, commission, when I came in about a year or so ago, we had no office. We basically had no equipment, no desk or anything. Uh, one day I'd come in and I use a small temporary office up in the seventh floor and I'd sit at the desk. It would be the director's office, one computer, one desk. And when my admin officer came in, it became the admin's officers', uh, office. And wherever I was, was the director's office with my phone and my own personal computer. So that's how lean we were in the very beginning. So I'm glad that we've moved forward. We got our office. We have minimal equipment. We have minimal staff. But I'd like to move it forward because you see, I've sent you pictures with, uh, of the files, which we were able to access about April last year and it's, uh, it's, I only sent you a few pictures. There's a lot more than this going on. And, uh, we're doing our best to preserve them. But we do need extra hands. And the major problem there is that.
Ask, uh, yeah. So yeah, you're right. So in the budget, uh, we passed a provision that exempts, uh, ancestral lands commission from BBMR allotment controls. So that helps a little bit, hopefully, yeah, and, uh, and the other measures.
Helped a lot. Don't, uh, it's not understated. That was a lot.
Uh, PBS is charging you to.
They would charge too much.
To broadcast your meetings is.
That's what they advertised. They sent us the, the note that, uh, it would be two hundred fifty dollars for the first two hours and a hundred dollars each after following that. And we just can't afford that. So what we've done is we've figured a way how to livestream on YouTube. Uh, while our meetings are ongoing. So we're livestreaming while we're virtual, uh, conversing like we are right now. And, uh, with Joey Leon Guerrero, we were able to accomplish that. I mean, we do put all the skills we have together in here. Some of us know things and we share it.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on to the next question because, um, just for time concerns, but, uh, what about the, you had described before in a oversight hearing in November that you were pursuing a TAP grant, T A P.
Yes.
Through Bureau of Statistics and Plans. Can you just tell us the status of that? Status of those grant, that grant.
We're working with BSP on that and we hope to have that ready for submittal by April. We were planning for that to help us with the digitization of our files and the preservation of it and setting up a way for us to, again, bring our commissioners in and livestream. We're finding other routes that we can do it that are challenging, but we need to sustain this one way or the other. The way we're doing it now is, when I first opened up the Zoom account, it was on my own personal account, on my own credit card. And then when we started now up the livestreaming, I'm using my own email accounts with YouTube. So things like that should be funded because, you know, directors come and go with elections. And should I go, that all has to be transferred to somebody else. We should sustain that within the department, within the agency. It should not be with the individual.
I agree. And I want to thank you also for having this long-term. You've always repeated to me this vision or, you know, concern you have of when you are not the person there. I share that. I'm not the person here. I want these records to be available, everything that we've done to be available as well. I, I thank you for that effort. So one more thing is, you know, the other way to raise money, of course, is fees. And so I noticed that, you know, you have discussed this recently in some meetings, but, but really the fees we're talking about are for reproduction services, audio recordings, cost of the thumb drives, the land title applications. I'm not sure about that one, but, but these fees are really the services that you provide and, and keeping them open, right, to the public?
Yes.
Can't imagine, that is not the revenue base that we really want to pursue for anything like this, like trying to get more employees or anything like that. But, but I do want to commend you for at least reviewing those and, and updating where necessary. But I want to remind everybody, so Ancestral Lands has a whole other account. Now, this is the land bank, right? And that is a trust account supposed to be, as the commissioner described, to, to, you know, compensate landowners whose land was kept by the government of Guam and not going to be returned despite it being returned by the federal government. And so we are still a great debt to these landowners, and we need to address that. And it's very clear the money is not going to be enough based on the landowners that we're looking at even, you know, currently. But so that's, that's huge. So we just need to get the operations fund up to a level that would allow you to, to get at least some additional staff to, to do some of this work and get it done in immediately, right? So I want to thank you again for your efforts and all the other commissioners as well. Mr. Chair, thank you, and I thank you, Mr. Chair, for your support that, you know, I think we need a veto-proof bill here, you know, or something, or general fund. Just say general fund, like they've been saying, general fund. If they take it out of a special fund and put it to the general fund, then let's take it back out of that, that general fund. It is, you know, the, the whole audit that this stemmed from, that Senator Taytawui, you know, pursued was showing all these special funds being removed from, or this, yeah, money being removed by, from special funds, not being replaced into those special funds. We've seen that, remember, with the, when I first came in, we saw it with the emergency E-nine-one-one fund. We saw it with DLM, yeah, which I, yeah. And we saw it with the Tomorrow Land Trust Infrastructure and Survey Fund, of all things, you know. So, yeah, that money still has not been replaced. So I want to thank you for pursuing this and for your testimony today. Suzu Smasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We're, we're, we're gonna figure out what we need to do to take care of the ancestral. Senator Perez, Simena, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this opportunity. No questions at this time, but, you know, I've sat through many public hearings, budget hearings, where, you know, we hear the need from ancestral lands. And I really appreciate the author for seeing the need and, and addressing the need in, in, through this bill. And I am full supporter of this bill, and I would like to see, you know, really, you know, it's been so long that we need to, you know, find the landowners that are, you know, do the return of their lands. And, you know, anything that we can do to support that. You know, you know, many of these landowners may have passed, and now it's their descendants. We really need to address, I think this is a priority. We need to make this a priority, and this is just one step towards that. So, yeah, I look forward to clearing any of the other impediments, including in the rules and regulations. That is one of, one other impediment, I think, when it comes to return of lands and, and, you know, fully having a functioning agency. So, you know, being a descendant myself, you know, I, I really see that, you know, the injustices need to be addressed, at least in our, our lifetime. Whatever we can do in our lifetime to address this. So, yeah, I have, you have my full support. As a co-sponsor, I really appreciate, again, the author of this bill for including me. Suzu Smasi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. There being no other individuals to testify, and ask Senator Telo if he can make a, give a closing statement, please.
Thank you. I'll try and make it very short, Mr. Chair. This bill, just moving it forward, it, it's not one person. You know, when you hear that there are co-sponsors, actually, it's basically, I like to just call them all authors of this legislation. You know, you can't do, I can't do it by myself, and I really appreciate the support from those who are co-authors, you know, to this, this bill. I greatly appreciate it, and your push for this, Mr. Chair, again. Most especially, Mr. Birch and, and, you know, Mr. Leguana. Thank you so much for being here and testifying and providing all the issues that are coming up. But the one thing that really stands out most for me is losing the institutional knowledge of, of where everything is at, you know, where the skeletons are, where the books are located. I mean, if you don't have somebody to train, I mean, Joey, as you mentioned, Ronald, about Joey, he's amazing, he does all the work, and he really needs to be there to train an individual. We can't bring somebody on once he leaves, you know, and I think he only has a year left. So the time is now to bring people on to train them so they, it can keep running smooth, or we're gonna have a setback, another year's setback, trying to reorganize everything, and that's a wasted time. So whatever we can do right now, Mr. Chair, finding this funding, especially, most especially, finding out what happened to that money, you know? Let's look into this, let's call DOA, let's find out how they were able to take money out of that account or overexpend from that particular account. And it needs to be put back, especially if it wasn't never the, had gotten a fractional lot, from what I gather, it wasn't. It was for something else. So I really appreciate my colleagues today. And again, Suzu Smasi, doncoluna Suzu Smasi, for everyone testifying and supported this. And hopefully, we can find this funding. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. We'll find the funding. Remember, we talked about that, about all these inactive accounts. They said there was money, and then they're gonna say now there's no money? There, too many ghosts in the system. We need to clear that up. If you say there's a dollar, then put the dollar back in. And that being said, there's no other individuals testify on Bill two-two-five-three-six. The committee will continue to receive testimony, and please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. In closing, again, I would like to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. The public hearing is now adjourned for Bill two-three-five-three-six-COR. The time now is three fifty-two. Suzu Smasi, and please all be safe. Hope to see you the rest of this year. Viva tomorrow. Thank you, sir.
Viva. Happy new.